Good evening. It's January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty five at seven, six forty-two. And I'd like to call the Grotton Board of Education Curriculum Committee meeting to order. We have, everybody's here. So Mike Whitney, Andrea Ackerman, and myself, Adrian Johnson, are board members. And we have, from the school system, we have Amy McKenna, Assistant Principal, Matt Brown, Principal at Fitch, Carmita Hodge, Assistant Principal at Fitch, and Anne Marie Marchini is the Assistant Superintendent. So the first order of business is review the November sixteenth meeting minutes. So does anyone have any questions or concerns on the minutes? I will entertain a, a motion to approve the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes.
Andrea. Again, all right, approved. All right. And now we will get right into the new Fitch course curriculums, which I think our first one would be Unified Music. So I guess if we want to say, I know we've gone through all of these, but if we want to give a quick recap on it and can I go from there? Whoever, are we still waiting for some people online?
Sandra Hall.
Wait, let me see, I got that.
Sure. You know, Sandra Hall or Karen Hawkins.
She unmuted, I think she's ready.
Great.
Maybe.
I'm here.
Nice.
Hi, sorry.
I'm not sure why my background is this way, or it says my son's name, sorry. But, so the Unified Music we brought forth because we feel like we needed another class for our special ed population. And Sandy was very excited to teach the class, and so we created the curriculum together.
All right. Yeah, I know we had, we had talked about it. Is that class, do we project, project that that class will be pretty full?
Definitely with our special ed students, it will be. And as far as partners, we're working on recruiting partners, which I don't think will be a huge issue because we definitely have some we would like to recommend. And I'm sure Laurel has students in her Ed Rising program that also would like to join, as well as I'm sure Sandy has some recommendations for her music students.
All right, all right. Do you want to just give a quick rundown on what it is? I want the class, just a, just a quick overview of the class, I guess.
Sure. So Karn and I had talked about how the high school has Unified Art. They have Unified Sports. We do not have a Unified Music, which really didn't make sense to us when we thought about it because it's such a universal thing and so therapeutic. And on top of it, we have such a wonderful base of special ed students that could benefit from this course. And on the other hand, we have this Ed Rising program of future leaders in our classrooms. And then music students who also want to be future music educators. So this course will cover the basics from our national standards on music, basics of, you know, steady beat and playing instruments and singing in tune and, and movement and, and playing instruments, all, all the fun things. And of course modifying it for whoever our clientele is, whoever.
All right. You're kind of freezing up a little bit of some, a little bit on us. But, but that's fine. Do we have any questions by board members?
And I have a question, just, just for all of the courses, I love that it has right up at top what the course name is. And, but I think it'd be good just to add a notation somewhere that when it goes to the full board, this is a half-year course, this is a full year course. You, you can, you can figure out eventually, but just having that right up on top would help. That's just a minor thing. And just, I fully endorse this course and, and truly know the importance of music and the arts on everyone's life and certainly in formative years. And so it's very important to have access to a variety of opportunities for all of our students. Thank you. And thank you for what, all of what you do.
Thank you.
We definitely enjoy it. We like working with these students for sure.
Right. Yeah, I think this is, I think this is a great, great addition to our, to our offerings. You have any?
Awesome.
No. All right. So somebody's gonna have to fill me in on how to do this. Do I, do we vote as a committee to approve it?
I think, I wasn't sure. Are we just reviewing it? What's, what's the agenda items there?
It just, uh, just says new curriculum.
So are we, are we going to say that, that it will go to the, the two whoever writes the curriculum in the summer?
Well, it's already been, the, the, we approved it earlier, well, earlier in the school year. They wrote the curriculum, so that's what we have now.
Oh, it's done.
So I think now we have to approve it to send to the full board.
I think that we just said, I just think, Emery, maybe you can help me with this. I think all we have to say is reach consensus to, to send it to the board. Yep. And then the board approves it.
Yeah. All right. And if you want to vote, we can do a vote.
Just, yeah, it's not a really official vote with three people, but, but.
Yes.
Yes.
Is everyone in favor? So yes, we are all in favor of approving this and, and sending it to the full board. And thank you very much for the work that you've done, you know, writing this curriculum and, and kind of thinking up this class and, and bringing it to us. I do appreciate that.
Thank you.
I think we all appreciate that.
Thank you for your time tonight.
All right. So next one is Ed Rising two, UConn Ed Rising two. Oh, yeah. All right, I've got them in the wrong order here, but yeah, now we've got it. I, I, yeah. So this is a year-long course, correct? And it's a follow-up to Ed Rising one?
Yeah, it's a more in-depth study for Ed Rising two. So they will have like a, like review and refresh unit on like the stuff that we go over this, like this year in year one, and then they go more in-depth and then they have more of a close like internship with other teachers in the elementary or middle school, depending on what area they are comfortable in.
All right, yeah. And you want to remind us again, how many students are in Ed Rising one?
Um, I have nineteen this year.
Nineteen? So, you know, we're, do you have any guesses on how many students might be in this course next year? I mean, I know it takes a little while to build them up, but.
Yeah, so there are seven kids that could take the year two course, so it would be small. When Ed Rising started last year, my class was only a size of eight. So it has grown tremendously like this year. So, and some of the students are interested in, you know, continuing to pursue education. So it would be small to start to say all seven kids wanted to take the course. But the hope is to like get it running and then have like more, offer Ed Rising one to, you know, open it up to sophomores really, and then get them in so that they can choose to continue in the year two course. So, so yeah, I think it would be, it would definitely be small. A lot of my students this year are seniors. So they will be graduating and going to be able to take the course, but I do have seven juniors. So.
And out of full disclosure, one of those juniors is my son and, and is very excited about this course. And I know he loves Ed Rising one. And it's been fantastic. He's been down in the elementary school with one of our favorite elementary school teachers when our kids were younger. So, so I've, I've had personal ties. I don't know if that disqualifies me from, from supporting this class, but, but I, I really do. I'm very happy. And I, I think in general in the state, I was, I, I meant to look up the numbers on how many teachers we have in the state, but it's got to be like, was it eighty thousand or something like that, or?
There's definitely demand.
Yeah, there's a huge demand for teachers. So, so this maybe, maybe students will come back to our district that take this. And even if not, they, they will contribute to education, which is very, very important, as everybody here agrees.
And I do think, as Laurel was saying, you know, once students know that they can take two years of the course, you know, more and more kids will be taking it as juniors as opposed to right now when we had seven, probably thinking this was a, only a one-time course. So, yeah, I think it will grow.
Yeah. And for the Ed Rising one, did you mention that it, you may be envision opening up for sophomores or, or it already is? I didn't know about that.
Well, I did have Mrs. McKenna's daughter take it as a sophomore. And that obviously went really well. So we are, we are definitely like opening it up to sophomores. I had already talked to like my English department, but also planned on getting an email out to the rest of staff about, you know, if like they could recommend students from sophomore up. But even, I mean, even if we had like, you know, yeah, I would say sophomore year would actually be good. Sorry. They could recommend them for the course. And then, yeah, the hope is to like broaden that up so we can get them interested and then be able to filter more into the year two. And then of course, also recommend some of those Ed Rising kids then to take like Ms. Hopkins and Ms. Hall's class, or I know Ms. Narika's class as well, just to get them like in that career cluster. And I think we also have been working on some career clusters at school. So as we're getting ready to recommend, there's different career pathways. So there's a whole like educators one, so.
Exactly. Yeah. Just to echo what Laurel was saying, Ms. Donovan was saying, are the pathways that Mr. Brown's gonna talk about shortly, education is one of them. And we have included Ed Rising one and Ed Rising two as part of pathways. Yep.
Yeah.
Good deal.
Right. I, I have a feeling in two years, this, the course is gonna be packed. Once it's known, yeah.
Yeah.
Hopefully. I love to teach the class. It's, it's really fun to get to, you know, talk to our students about like, you know, the career that we love. So.
All right. Are there any more questions? All right. Well, we, we really appreciate your time. And I know last time I believe you were in front of the board. We didn't let you go until ten thirty, and I am so sorry about that. We've actually kind of changed the way we're gonna do things because of that, the way that scheduling happened. But, and I know we were a little late tonight, so I apologize for that. But we will do our best to, to make sure our teachers that get up very early, well, everybody does, gets out a little bit earlier too, when you, when you do stay over or stay late for these things.
I wondered, was this the one that didn't have the course name up on top? Maybe this one? Just, just on the.
Oh, yeah, it doesn't, I just think.
It's just write in Ed Rising and Ed Rising two, rather.
Yeah. And then the art isn't really, well, that one, it, it, well, that one is there. But yeah, it is Ed Rising two. Yeah, I guess when it comes to the board, assuming everybody approves it. Yeah, if it can just be a little bit clearer on, you know, full year class, it's a, whatever we call, it's UConn, right? So it's a high-level class. So, but just all, it's a UConn class.
The year one is UConn. It's paired with their If You Love It, Teach It course. I'm not sure about, like, I'd have to go through the process of getting this one as a UConn course. But I, you know, I wasn't sure like what it would align with there. So I need some help with that. So I don't know.
Oh, all right. Yeah. On our agenda, it said UConn Ed Rising two. Maybe that was the confusion. But, yeah, Mike.
Thank, thank you for saying that. It reminds me, I just want to say that I am a UConn faculty and I do sometimes work with early college experience, but there's, there's no overlap here right now. So I don't have, have any conflict of interest, not that I necessarily would anyway.
Yeah. So would this be, would this be offered as a college prep level class, an honors level class, or a kind of that, I don't know how you describe the higher, if there's a, you know, I know we call it AP IB level or UConn level. But do you have a plan on, on, you know, the grading ranking, I guess?
Yeah, definitely. Like at the very least honors, but I mean, it can be open to like going higher than that. I would just need to figure out like how it would like get looped in with like UConn or a different like college. I had talked with Mr. Morse a little bit about something potentially with IB, but I'm like not super clear on it, so I'm not gonna speak on it. But we had talked about pairing it with that as well.
All right. Well, that, how, how we described the class, I guess, you know, you guys can just figure that out and let us know when, but when it comes to the board, is that, if that sounds reasonable to everybody. All right. So if there is no more questions, do we all agree that we approve this curriculum and we'll send it to the board?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Agreed. All right. Well, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Right. All right.
Photography?
Yes. Next on the agenda is sports slash events and photography, which we did notice and, and appreciate. So.
Hi, guys.
Hi.
Um, so this course is to help sort of expand the photo classes that the students have here at Fitch High School already and help direct them in an area where they can continue to use this outside of school. So the idea of sports and events, thank you for helping me kind of find that other word of, because it wasn't just going to be sports, you know, that action and looking at all of that Fitch sort of offers and the kids being able to help photograph and learn how to photograph and be aware of the equipment and the lighting and the process of taking pictures. So the way the curriculum is written is that they would sort of learn about documentary photography in that process of telling a story through their images and then also candid moments, being able to sort of process what is happening and when to take that picture, capture that moment. And then the equipment and what you can do with that, and as well as learning to work outside. A couple of the students have worked with Mark Russell and hoping to continue to give them those opportunities here and in the future beyond the classroom. So it's a good pathway. If we've been talking about pathways at school, so this helps sort of give the students a new direction and follows very nicely within a couple of the pathways that we just learned about.
All right. Yeah, that's, that's great. And I assume photography is probably very in-demand, highly in-demand, I guess, would be the.
Extremely innovative.
Yes, very.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's a, half the students aren't able to take photography, just because we don't have enough numbers. We don't have enough in the scalars to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think this class is going, going to be even more popular as the next step. I don't know if it would be after photos three, Miss Scala, or it can be anywhere listed on the continuum.
Yes, I was hoping that they would get one and two, so they get a good foundation. And then they can go into photos three, or they can start to direct themselves and take photography, sports and events. There's a lot of students very excited about it because they can come in and take photo one and two their freshman year, and then they take photo three, honors photo three, and they're done, and they have two more years. What are they gonna do? So this gives them a great opportunity to start to have something to look forward to.
And they could take photos for me. As you know, that my photos are pretty bad.
Yes, I have to help not only the students, but sometimes the staff.
But it fits nicely in the journalism and broadcasting pathway. It fits perfectly in that, in that pathway.
Yeah. And I like to see also that, as you mentioned, it fits in a couple pathways, these, these career pathways naturally intersect. And that's, that's really good too. I was, I was wondering, is there, do you have the, the equipment necessary for the class? And then I was thinking about transportation to and from events. I didn't know how that was gonna be handled.
Right. So I was hoping that we would start with, I have all the equipment, right? Eventually, we may need to, like, if we get going, we can do things like where my photo club for the honors kids, they take pictures at events at school and then they charge just to cover the cost of the photo booth and then a little extra, and they kind of put that money away, and then they've been able to buy things for, for specifically, actually, they bought a bunch of stuff for the sports photography that they've been doing on the side. And then, so we're covered in that part. As far as getting rides and going to places outside of school, I would hope that we would kind of be able to work between the middle school and the high school, different events. And then maybe as we get a solid group of kids, because there would be sophomore through seniors that they'd be able to start to work together for rides to get to some of the nighttime events.
I'm, I'm thinking they could even, away events, if they could travel with the team too, you know, I mean, we already have a bus traveling anyways. So eventually if we went to away games too, and we could cover away games and events that are, that are out of the campus, we, we'd have transportation going there anyways. So.
Yeah. I love this. This is a nice synergy. Like there's education, but also kind of more awareness of what others, what others are doing and, and helping to publicize it. So it's a great idea. And, and thank you to our, our district teacher of the year for attending our meeting. Everyone else as well.
Yeah.
Well, I really appreciate your time and consideration for this course. And I know, you know, the kids are very excited about it. They've been asking, is it approved? Is it approved? Are we gonna be able to sign up? You know, I want to be able to take it for next year, my senior year. I want to do this. And so we're looking forward to it.
Yeah, I, as I was reading through the curriculum, I saw you had the kids were gonna develop portfolios, is it? And yeah, we, we, as a board, would love to see those, you know, next year or whenever, when, when they're ready, if, if students are willing to share them. It sounds great.
I would definitely set up a portfolio. And with the new TVs that are in there, the, the goal would be to start to show some of the work digitally as well. So the kids, you know, having that portfolio at the end will be able to give them the ability to say, hey, look at what I've done. They can work with second shooters and as a second shooter for, you know, other event photography. The casino is always looking for event photographers, and maybe we can set something up there where we get a chance to go over and they get to start to work there. But at the end, they'll be able to have the ability to show their work. And so real-world application there.
Yeah. Yeah, that's fantastic. Well, there's always action at the Board of Ed, so they can kind of hear whenever they want.
Yep.
I never get my picture taken.
Now you'll have to be ready, Andrea. You'll have, you know, your hair and makeup done before each meeting.
I'm the only bride that doesn't have wedding pictures, so there.
All right. Are there any other questions? All right. So do we agree to send this to the board for a full vote?
Absolutely, yes.
All right. Full agreement. So thank you very much. And, and thank you to all of you for all the work that you do and, and for staying late with us tonight.
Yeah.
We appreciate you and your time that you're putting in and thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thanks. All right, thanks.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
All right.
It took me just now to figure out you're on, online.
Yeah, it's weird.
All right. So, all right, discussion of honors level courses beyond 10th grade.
Just gonna share my screen so I can get. Right. So we were asked to really just kind of present our different opportunities, especially for our juniors and seniors at Fitch High School, on the different offerings that we had. So the first thing I, that we decided to kind of put together was really talking about, we have the IB program, we have AP, we have ECE courses, dual enrollment, meaning you're getting college credit, really, college experience, and you're getting the college credit for sitting in a high school class that is at the college level. So we want to talk about those three different, you know, different programs and how they're different and so forth, and how, how each of them is unique and special. And then we'll go through some of our, our different offerings at each of the department levels. All right. So this first slide really talks about IB, the IB program versus advanced placement. And I really want to start by, you know, I think one of the things that is thought of at Fitch High School is these are two competing programs. And that's something that we're really striving to get away from is, is not having them compete. They're both appropriate for the certain student. And at times what we're really trying to do, and I think we're doing a nice job, is, is when there's an opportunity to blend the two together to do that, as we know, so that can hopefully increase our class sizes, because we know that that's, that's an issue. And we need to build, build our, these, these programs and that, that would be a way to help with that. So on the left-hand column is just really what, what type of student is the IB program for, especially the diploma program? So the diploma program is when, when you're actually taking six full-on IB courses. You have a full, full IB schedule. You take exams in all of those and you end up with what's called an IB diploma program, or diploma, not program, but diploma. And it's, it's pretty intense, you know, and most of these courses, most of them are two-year courses. So when you commit to taking IB math higher, higher level, you're committing to take that as a junior and a senior. Same thing with like IB chem or, or a lot of the other courses. And really, I think the biggest difference is with IB, it's really about learning how to apply the concepts. You know, it's not just learning the content, but the application piece, thinking critically, really working with, with the material and so forth, being able to show your understanding, not just through one assessment, but through multiple ways, multiple avenues, including projects and the tests and papers. I was, I taught IB math standard level for, for a long time. And I really, one of my favorite things about that course, one of my favorite things to see at, at Fitch High School is, is when, when you see those kids develop those projects, because they really take the math that they learned and, and they apply it and something that they love, you know, they get to really own that, that project. So that's the, the diploma program. And then I, so I like to think of that, or we, we think of that as almost like the full meal. You're just taking, you know, you go to a restaurant, you order the, the full meal versus advanced placements like the à la carte menu. You can, you have more choice on, on the classes you can take. They're one-year courses, so you can take more of the AP classes. You're not committed to just IB chemistry. You could take AP chemistry one year, AP physics the other, and so forth. It's good, great for students that, that do well with test taking strategies, you know, their, their assessment is really just one assessment itself. But they have the opportunity to really take more, more, more courses because, because it's a one-year versus a two-year commitment. Do you guys have anything to add to that?
They go, you, you do have to pay for the test at the end of the year. Both of them cost money.
Yeah.
That's the only thing, you know.
And, and we have support for that for.
We've been supporting that, but yeah, and it, it, it is something that has to be considered though, because it is, it's a good cost there. But it's a great cost when you, when you think about what you're getting for it, you know, when, when you actually do take the test, you, you get the, the credit, it goes towards a lot of colleges and where, where it would cost our kids a lot more money if they were to take that at college.
And I was, sorry.
I was gonna say, UConn has done a good job in the last couple of years under Chris Todd's leadership of the ECE program, giving credit for both, ECE credit for both IB and AP courses, where in the past, those courses haven't necessarily matched up to UConn courses. He's been really advocating for UConn to give more credit for like an IB singleton class or an AP singleton class. So I've been thankful to see that.
All right. I, I have one question. An IB standard level class, is that generally a little bit less demanding than an AP class?
It can be. The standard, it's definitely less demanding than a higher level class. There is a. There, there is a big difference between taking, for example, the mass, mass standard level that I'm describing in the, in the. The higher level and I, I would argue, I'm, I'll, I'll always go back to math, because that's my. You know, that's my area of expertise and I would say, yeah, uh, AP, like our AP calc is more demanding than the, the IB standard level.
Yes, and for so individuals and societies, I think the IB global politics is just as challenging as the IB Americas or. World Americas. So it's just that these are individuals, this society is supposed to be the most challenging department from where I'm told. But I think IB, IB global politics is just as challenging.
Alright.
And that's SL.
But so, so you, so like the one-year SL math, I'll go back to that just because I, I understand math well as well. But, um, um, but the one-year I, SL math is, is slightly less challenging than the high level, than the first year of the.
Yes.
Or the, the IB high level.
The IB, yes, it's, it's a lot less challenging than the IB, but it is a two-year course still, the IB standard level is a two-year course. It's designed not, you know, for, for a student that, that math is not their thing, you know, that's what that class is designed for, but. You, you cover a lot of content, you know, uh, you do co- cover some calculus, but it doesn't go to the extent that even an AP calc would go to. But at the same time, what it does is, as I was talking before about that project-based. They, the senior year after they, we, you cover most of the content. Now they take, like, they, they take a project that they developed, design, and they create that throughout the whole year, their whole senior year. It, it ends up being a pretty detailed project, so they're learning how to apply the math that, that they never really that strong and. And sometimes that's the thing that kind of, kind of grabs them and, and make them realize that, that maybe math is a little bit more for them than they thought, but. But really, it is designed for a kid that, you know, they feel like they're more of a humanities kid, they would take the standard level, especially if they're going for the diploma program.
Yeah.
Alright. And then the IB AB AP, I counted up in the, uh, program of studies for this current year. Um, I came up with, um, thirty-two IB courses, uh, one of them overlaps with, with the Yukon ECE. Um, and then fifteen AP courses and then five of them overlap with Yukon. It overlaps where natural, I think, but.
Yeah.
With AP and, and college courses sometimes, is that about right, like?
It is, I actually, uh, the next couple of slides, I have, I have the course listings for each one. And I, like I said before, and you know, we're really, really trying to look into, we've always tried to blend the two, you know, like when AP can be the first year of IB. Cause IB is that, that two-year course. As much as possible, if AP, like for example, AP chem, would they take that their junior year, IB. Uh, chem, the second year of it would, you know, that, that would be the prereq for, for the IB chem, the second year. So that's what we're trying to do with a lot, a lot of the, the classes is, is make that combo when we can, but, um. I, those numbers sound about right, but I, I have one in the next couple.
So our, our courses offered, um, because I, I went through and I thought there was something like nineteen IB classes.
One thing that, that, that I think is ca- catching you on that, and it, it's true, but it's also. Remember, like, if you're taking IB chem, it's IB chem eleven and then I, IB chem twelve, so it's really two different course, because you're taking it for two years.
Yeah.
But we're, what, we offered it and we've offered it in the past, but we never really run IB chem eleven, because we end up only offering. AP chem, because we can't, because we don't have enough of a demand for kids that want to take both IB chem. And AP chem, so we have to make a decision and, and what we've really had to do and what a lot of schools do, especially. Like when we go to these conferences and so forth and we talk with other schools, is that's why you have to have that natural combination of. You know, you teach the AP content the first year and then you teach the, the IB twelve or the, the second year of IB. The following year, so that's what we're really, so they, they are listed on there, but we're not, we, we haven't been running like IB chem. Eleven, we didn't run this year, we ran AP chem, with the understanding that the kids that wanted to continue with the IB program and they were gonna do IB chem. Would be taking that as a twelfth grader.
Alright, so IB chem would, IB will be next year, there'll be IB chem, if the plan, yeah.
That's the plan, yep.
Alright.
But we haven't been running IB chem eleven, because we don't have enough numbers to run both AP chem and IB chem eleven, it's just. We would have two class, you, the, the problem that we've had for, for years is, is under enrolled classes.
Classes with six people, yeah.
So that's, and we, we did that in the past and we, we're trying to get away from that, obviously, until. The great day when we have twenty in each and that would be awesome, but that's a, a ways right. Yep.
Well, I know we had a fantastic chem teacher retire recently, so that, that was, that's a big loss, I'm sure too, but.
Right.
Alright, yeah.
Right, so those were, those, those are, uh, really, and then the ECE, we kind of talked about as well there, where the ECE, a lot of times, uh, we. If we combine the, the, the three we can, but, um, ECE courses are courses where, where we're, we're tied into Yukon. Uh, and we're working, trying to work with other, other, uh, schools, so that they get the, the, the college credit and, um, and then we'll go over some of those. Later on, but this, this graphic is really some of the pathways that we're offering as, as the other, the teachers, when they were going through their, their curriculum, we're talking about. Um, obviously, like the diploma program, the AP program, uh, even college, some of the college choices are always gonna be. Pathways for all our kids, so we're trying to create those career program or the career offerings, um, for our students that. Um, that want to go in that avenue, um, so this, those are the different pathways we have there. And with each of those pathways, uh, I'm just gonna go to the. This is an example of really like a sample planner, uh, this would be for our nursing students or EMT students. Of a, uh, you know, a, a medical or a, a medical pathway. Of, in our hope and our, you know, is to have our kids map out each year. A map of how they're, they're, they're planning to, and obviously it's not static, it can change from year to year as they change their mind and so forth. But really getting them an idea of, alright, this is where I think I'm going, so this is the map of the classes I would have to take to, to take that pathway. So this is just a sample of if they went honors nursing or EMT. And, uh, counselors, as they would go over something like this with them, um, they would also kind of try to supplement. Those courses with whatever extra particular activities would fit that pathway as well. Um, I, I know our counselors have done a, a, a. Nice job and our DEI committee is doing a nice job of really collaborating with our teachers and starting to think about what these. These mappings would look like for each of the pathways and that's work we're doing, they even did it this past Tuesday, where we reviewed it with our departments. So that we can really have a map like this for each of our, each of our pathways, we, we have more, a decent amount done already. But, um, we want to at least have one sample for each pathway. Okay.
Good.
Yep.
Right, so this, as I said, uh, this is just a graphic of the IB courses we offer. Uh, I did not include the IB twelves on here, because as I was saying before. Did, there, most of these are two-year courses, so it would have just been a repeat and I was trying to fit it all in one slide and be able to read it, so. That's, that's what this is, these are the IB classes that we offer, doesn't mean we run all of these classes every single, every single year, uh. We can only, you know, run the ones that, uh, we, we have the numbers for, um. And sometimes we, we get in a dilemma, because if they're going for the diploma program, we don't want to deny them the opportunity to get a diploma program, because we have small numbers and that's. An area where, where we're hoping to build our numbers, so that we don't, we don't fall into that trap as much anymore. But that's really where we get to the, the, the trap, where we have some classes with, with few enrollments. One example of that for this year would be the IB business, and we ended up, they're actually taking. Um, through an online class this year for that, for that subject area.
Are there particular ones that are well-enrolled all the time, there might, that has a general appeal beyond?
Psychology.
Psycho, yeah, psychology, our English is, our English is are always, uh, you know, ha- have, are high in numbers.
Theory of knowledge, yeah.
The math standard level, the, the higher level not as much, but, um.
The sports exercise.
Is very, yep, usually we run more than one section, which. It doesn't happen often right now in our IB courses, where we're able to run more than one section.
It, so the theory of knowledge and the sports exercise and health, they don't have SL or psychology, SL or HL, they're just.
You can take.
What are they?
Sports exercise, you can take either HL or, or SL, you have to make that decision, um, and then, you know, uh. You know, how they're assessed is, is different, um. And that's really, uh, well, that could be the, similar to something with, with like English and so forth, but. But yeah, the theory of knowledge, I don't think, that's not an SL or HL thing, that's just every, every IB diploma kid has to take the theory of knowledge. As a course. So, uh, the next slide is our AP offerings. Thus far. And again, like when you're looking at this list, as I was saying before, AP bio is, is really the first year of IB right now and so, uh. I think for, for the near future, at least, uh, for the next couple of years, I, I would argue, AP chem, same thing. Um, AP computer science, that's getting more and more popular, uh, with, with our students. Um, the.
Humanities, I would say, yeah, yeah, AP government is huge, huge, AP US is huge, AP psychology is always packed.
Yeah, our AP gov, AP US history, I, our enrollment's probably at one fifty, at least.
Yeah, I, I actually, I, I crunched tons of numbers that I requested, but, um. But yeah, a hundred and forty-seven kids in AP gov and I, I was pleasantly surprised, because that's rough, that's over half of the class. Is taking an AP level class, which. That, I mean, considering how diverse the class is, that's a lot of kids willing to challenge themselves, so great job in getting the kids to. Getting that many kids to take that and, and that's pretty much all 10th grade or is there older?
That's 11th grade.
Oh, alright, yeah, oh, the gov is, oh, it's the, it's A push is ten.
AP US history is usually the first one that they're, they're taking, um, but I will, you know, like, these last few years, we've been really pushing them to. To take the challenge, try it, you know, and, and that's our big, big mantra is just give it a try and it's easier to say, okay, that's way too much for me. In the early, early months and then we can dial it back down, as opposed to the opposite, where you never knew if you could try it or not. And a lot of, I, I, a, a lot of our kids are realizing they can do it.
Yeah.
And even if they don't make it, I think that's one of the biggest things we've talked about, is even if they don't get that three on the AP exam, they sat through a. A college level course, they know what a college level course is now, and now they have a better decision, is this for me, is this not for me? And when they do go into ninth grade, if they're going into college, it's not the first time that they realize it's not for them, if that's the case. Or they know how to better prepare themselves, so that they are ready, so. I think it's, it's great that, that our numbers are, are doing what they're doing.
Yeah, yeah, I see that US, the A push is ninety-six kids, so almost half the class, which is, which is great.
And, and then the AP government, that satisfies the state requirement of graduation for civics and so that advanced offering, which is wonderful. Um, and I'm not gonna ask about it tonight, because we're ultimately get to honors, but, um, I assume you keep track of like, um. Uh, success on, on the AP exams.
Yeah.
From year to year, different classes.
At it, there's a little bit of this, we, we'll share with you, we're not probably not gonna, as you just said, we're not gonna get into it, but the data is there for you and. Um, it, you know, really making a comparison to how we did last year, you know, how we're doing against the average and so forth and. Looking back, like I, I had made similar slides prior to COVID, so it's kind of interesting to see where we're at and. That stuff that we, I can definitely share with you guys as well, so you can see. See not like the, the, the increase in numbers, but also our, I think our scores are, are just the same, if not better. But now than they were even be- before then, so. I'm, I really, I think we're, we're happy with what we're seeing. Alright, and the last one is our dual enrollment offerings right now, and I mean, when you look at this, you see. Two years ago, we offered Yukon English, you, uh, eleven, twelve, you know, calc BC. Um, ed rising and stats and, and we doubled in size with our, our dual enrollment courses. And that's really just kudos to our teachers that are willing to go the extra, you know, extra efforts to get certified to teach these courses. So that they can offer it to their kids that take their classes, um, so this, this is exciting and. Our, our number of enrollment in dual, dual enrollment classes is really, um, grown exponentially.
And there's been a grant that's helped with that.
Yes.
In terms of training.
Jasmine Zubek's been the, the one overseeing that grant and she's done an amazing job. Outreaching to the teachers and, and coordinating with, with the university and so forth.
And there's some, um, this is with Yukon, but there's also ETSU for some courses, I can't remember which ones right now.
Here we have creative writing in Three Rivers, yeah.
Oh, great.
Exercise, science, exercise. Yep.
Alright, so that's, that's really the, you know, the end of the, the, the look at the programs. The next thing that, uh, I was asked to, uh, put together, whoops, is, I don't know, sorry. Driving me crazy, that social studies is cut out there, but we're gonna have to live with it. Alright, but, uh, so this is just the different levels and what honors offerings do we have in 11th and 12th grade for, uh. For our kids and really, uh, this is a mapping of what we have for 11th grade in social studies and then 12th grade, and when you look at these. Uh, you'll notice there's really no honors level courses. Um, you have college prep level, really mostly on the left here. Uh, offerings that, that, that our students can take and then our honors level courses in 11th and 12th grade are our AP and IB. Um, our ninth and 10th grade years are the years where they're, they're taking honors level courses. And that's trajectorying them into a pathway, so that they are ready to take the AP and IB classes as 11th and 12th graders. So AP psych, IB history Americas, global politics, European history would be the honors courses that they would take as juniors. Um. Is AP gov not on there?
Thank you, miss.
So it's, it's over to the left, AP gov as a required course, so that's a, that's the, the big one in 11th grade that a lot of our kids are taking. And then those are the 12th grade, grade courses, where again, there's no honors level courses, because at, by the time they're in 12th grade. The honors level pathway would be the, the IB or the AP class. So that's social studies. Science, when you look at science, uh, as you, you're reading this from left to right, you have the college prep path, you have honors AP. And the IB path, um. And as you look from ninth to, to 10th grade, there's honors class offerings. And as we get into the 11th grade, most, most of our kids are taking AP or IB chem, AP or IB biology, AP environmental. Um, and I'm not sure what, that must be physics. And then the following year, as, as seniors, they can either take a different AP courses we were talking about before, or they can continue on with the IB. Twelve class, the second year of those, those IB classes, uh, that we were referring to before. And then there's some of the electives that they have an opportunity to take as well. In science, there are some honors electives that they have, that they have the choice to take, but those aren't the common classes that a student would take.
So for, for math, is there a track where they take, uh, some students would take honors junior year, I was trying to. If you go up from pre, get to pre-calc, uh, maybe.
Yeah, I got that one in a second, we'll, we'll look at it.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
That's, uh, the next one, real quick, English, um, same, same idea, and this one's more straightforward, because. They, they all have to take nine, ten, eleven and twelve English, so they're either taking English nine or honors English nine, same thing in 10th grade. And then 11th grade, they're still going in the path of college prep level with English eleven, or they're gonna choose AP Yukon English or IB English. For 11th and 12th grade, the electives that we have there, uh. Those are all, none, none of the ones on the top here are honors level, is that true?
No.
Just on the bottom, I can't move this stuff. Well, I can. Thank you. You wanna talk about the bottom, Amy?
Sure, so those are our, um, our electives plus our dual enrollment elective, so the dual enrollment electives will, um. Be, I guess, weighted as, you know, AP or dual enrollment, AP, ECE or IB, so because those are dual and. Dual enrollment courses, they're college courses, they do have greater weight than the English electives that are above. Um, all three of those dual enrollments are brand new this year and, um, growing in popularity, so we're very excited about that. Creative writing has always been a very popular class, heavily enrolled, and now students have the opportunity to earn college credit for it. Oral communications is another class, it's always been quite popular, and now when students are going into level two, they can get Yukon credit for it. And Yukon Writing Center is a course that was approved as, as an elective just a few years back. And when we wrote that curriculum, we wrote it in partnership with the Yukon Writing Center. So then when we were looking at our dual enrollment options with, um, Jasmine Zubek, who was coordinating that for us from school counseling. Um, we learned that we could actually not only be partnering with them with the Writing Center class, but have our students earn Yukon credit for that as well. So that's, that's gonna continue to grow in popularity, that's another class that, that fills, um. The education pathway, so we're quite excited about that one as well, it's going very well.
And they work with our younger kids.
Yeah, they're working with that, currently our Writing Center class is paired, um, with a, with a grade nine class. Um, and that has gone extremely well, I've been in it several times and. We have a few students from Writing Center Semester One that are taking on their Writing Center internship in Semester Two. They're gonna continue to work in our college level classes in grade nine, um, to kind of give extra support to students that really need more. Um, skills, you know, more, more, growing more capacity in reading and writing skills for, for whatever reason, so. It's really nice to see the older students and some of them are actually, um, you know, in ed rising or had been in ed rising. Kind of, you know, working on their own pathway and helping their, you know, their peers, their younger peers at the same time, it's been really rewarding for them.
I think that, that's kind of a theme that I hope you guys are seeing, like, you know, the photography we talked about before. Where they can actually be the ones taking the photography, you know, the, the, the event photos and so forth. We have our kids that are learning about the education field, helping our, our kids, so it's almost like a community within a community. We have our kids that are learning about education field, helping our our kids, so it's almost like a community within a community, um which is pretty cool that. That we're starting to to develop that at Fitch High School, I think.
And these electives, by their nature, you're having different classes, you know, juniors, seniors, sophomores together, which is wonderful. And these tend, maybe you mentioned this, these these tend to be all half-year courses, I would think, um.
Yes.
For the electives.
All the electives are half-year courses with the exception of IB Theater Arts.
Right.
Um that is a two-year um class, but everything else is a half-credit class.
Great, and I imagine maybe accepting the IB Theater Arts, because we discussed the challenges of enrollment. Those probably are pretty filled uh in terms.
They're not super filled yet.
All those course?
Yeah, the Theater Arts, we actually, we run Theater One and Theater Two at the same.
Oh, I meant all, meant all the other ones, it just seemed like they'd be.
They're pretty heavily in. Yeah.
Yep. Alright, so that's English. This is the mathematics field and, you know, this one that you were you were uh talking about before. Um where there are eleventh graders that take some honors level classes, there are a lot of different, you know, choices that can be made and so forth. One of the the problems or or the 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 struggles that we have is when number first thing is making sure. That we can get our kids on track if they wanna take Calc AB and then Calc BC as juniors and seniors. That's, we have to make sure they get the the prereqs in and that's a challenge. The other thing is for especially IB higher level, getting the prereqs in so that they're on pace, ready to go as eleventh graders to start those. So there are a lot of kids that double up with honors geometry and honors pre calc as a as a tenth grader. Um in order to accomplish that track. Um and they they would have usually had to take Algebra Two as a ninth grader. So, you know, a big thing is they taking that eighth grade on a, you know, Algebra One course sets them up for that track. We had, we have, it's actually not on this, I think this needs to be updated, but we don't have honors Algebra One in our. We now offer that in ninth grade as well for kids that didn't take it in eighth grade, but wanna try to catch up so that they can, they can finish off in a path. Um that we can offer them.
And it see with mathematics, this is the one where you could envision a student um at least going through eleventh grade, taking honors classes. And and maybe even the twelfth, because you get to honor calc and.
We have honors regular calc. And quite honestly, that's something that, you know, we might have to consider in future years, is that something? You know, we do offer a lot of classes and like, you know, that always causes scheduling constraints and and that's a constraint. We have some kids that are taking honors calc, we have some kids that are taking calc AB.
Yeah.
You know, um is that how we wanna continue? Because that is a challenge, because sometimes that reduces the numbers in each class.
This for me was was an example of a core offerings, you know, mathematics that you could. As a student could go through four years staying at honors level or maybe, or maybe even working up to honors level and getting there. Science, it um it is less clear maybe to junior year, but then it's, you've got the ele- electives um that are honors there, so.
But this, yeah, there is definitely some choice here for honors in the eleventh and twelfth grade.
Yeah.
But I don't know if that's something we wanna continue, that's something we have to think about in order to. If we wanna make sure all our classes are are reasonable numbers.
My experience as a, as as the an educator is that very, very bright students in other regards. Uh appreciate, you know, a little easier, not, they're not easy, just like a a kind of a step down from the other courses and and math. Sometimes, right? It's it's just a new way of thinking, I guess, it's it's hard for many.
I I did teach the honors calculus for many years and it was one of my most enjoyable classes, but um and I think they did get a lot out of it. But it is, it is tricky. We, you know, those are the types of things we have to think of.
So I I know I brought this up in a, I think when you, maybe when you were talking about your data and scores and stuff. Um but trying to get kids in a little bit earlier, because sometimes you have a fair amount of math kid, not not a ton. But a fair amount that are just really excel out of elementary school. And trying to like build those like eight, nine, ten years so that they can really get to the higher level math. Cause I know, I know, I I'm I'm very happy that we offer honors um Algebra One at ninth grade. That was a, that was a huge divide where if you didn't make, if you didn't make that test cutoff, you're really stuck in the lower level math and science. And and that that was a great change, which I I, you know, I think is is great for our kids. Um but it's, you know, it is my own opinion, but I feel like um we need to pick kids up a little bit earlier. That way they can get a little bit further, you know, as they exit.
Yeah.
So that'll be a discussion for another day.
It will be.
But.
And it might be something where we really have to start getting creative about thinking, unfortunately, summers or something like that to to catch up. Cause there's a almost not enough time in the day sometimes to to catch them up, especially when we're, you know, for a lot of our kids that are on pace. They still have to take honors geometry, honors pre calc in their sophomore year.
Yeah.
It's a lot to get, you know.
Yeah.
So to try to catch up and do what we're already asking is is really not fair.
So but it's like, see, this has a lot of onramps to to honors or and beyond AP and IB, so.
Alright, uh this is our CTE pathways, um. Uh thank Melissa, Miss Melissa Manzio put this this pathways, these together. Um you know, we're very proud of of all the work that that this department has done. Uh and um really, this has been really that creator of all that, that the career program, the career pathways. Uh avenues that 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 we're going. One, one thing I, you know, our our nursing and our EMT classes are are starting to really, really get. Grow in popularity, which is awesome. Um our marketing is starting to really grow and, you know, those are areas where where I feel like we can catch a lot of kids. And um help them find their passion. And then the last one is, I'm not gonna go over, oh, no, we got two more. World Language, again with World Language, you can see. Again, once they get to that junior year, it's really, most of the offerings are IB um at that point. Um it does say honors Spanish five there, but we usually, like I was saying with some of the other classes. We don't have enough numbers to run honors Spanish five and run the IB Spanish. So usually um some of those two students will have to choose IB Spanish if they had chosen Spanish five as as a course. Um just cause it's just not possible to often have that many different choices.
So there's no, are there no AP?
There are no AP, no, it's just, we just offer the the IB levels.
Is, are they just incompatible or?
They, the the world language teachers, rather, they think that IB Spanish, IB is a better fit for the world language. They feel like they learn more of the the target language and they speak more of it and they have an understanding with it.
I guess it fit with being international backglow, that would be a strength.
Yeah.
And there's also the cert, the um dual, dual um. Yeah, seal by layers, see this.
Yeah, I did, I did, we did have a big conversation about it, but offering AP, but they rather stick with IB.
And I think it's something, you know, at some point, we, they they could always challenge and take the test and see, you know, take the AP test if that's something that they wanted to. To do as a student.
Yeah, I I have a question, ASL, um so how many ASL instructors do we have?
We have one.
Oh, so it's not even one and a half anymore?
I mean, well, they, because they also service students that are in, you know, uh hearing impaired students that are in our district. So so really, we have one and a half or we have two ASL teachers. But because they have caseloads as well, they they can't, they don't teach a full load. So really, we have six sections of ASL that we can offer. And those are busting at the seams.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely, that's like, just like we were talking about photography before, where we had, I'd say we have double, you know, the 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 students that are choosing ASL. We can only honor half of them with with those courses, unfortunately.
Yeah, I I mean, it, maybe that's a discussion for a different time too, but um so I saw we, we're gonna start offering ASL Four, right? Do we offer that right now?
Combine it with ASL Three.
Yep.
Oh, alright. Alright, so you can, but right now you don't allow ninth graders to sign up for ASL, right?
Um they're ninth graders, yeah. There's some ninth graders.
Yeah.
Um I mean, I know one ninth grader, but it was because of an IEP. So I'm just speaking about that since it's my own child, but um.
Our middle school students are stick with the language that they started in the middle school. So if it's Spanish, then we encourage them to continue on the Spanish track. If it's French, we encourage them to continue on the French track.
And and to graduate from college, from high school, they need, is it two years? And then, but and most colleges would want three, uh otherwise you're maybe even get accepted, otherwise you're taking it um later.
College, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, no, so are there plans to try to find another ASL teacher? Because I keep track of the website and I never see an ad for one.
Yeah. It would be, it it would be great, um but I, you know, I know the challenges of of, you know, adding adding other staff, but we we.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it it it's being discussed.
Yeah, I mean, from a popularity standpoint, from the survey, it's like, it's much more popular than in French, not even close, you know. So um offering what the kids and parents want, so.
It is also a challenge, uh just forewarning, you know, they're they aren't like, although ASL teachers aren't the easiest to come across. And we got very lucky when when um Dr. Robinsky and um came to our district and she, you know, and and Christie Ducher are doing a great job. Um but we were extremely lucky to get them to to join us, um and if we we could find another one and, you know, I, it would. It's a very popular section.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
And I'd even support um bringing it to the middle school as well. I I know we have some grants to, you know, have the, have languages introduced earlier in the the early elementaries, of course. But the American Sign Language, just the 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 demand and interest for, it's also very inclusive by nature. Um and it gets, I think, broadens people's way of like communicating really, but also thinking about how how people.
I'll just finish with this, with, you know, uh one of the great, like every, the last few years, we do a a Christmas concert, you know, and all our kids. Go into the auditorium, last day of school before winter break. And for the last two years, I'd say almost all of our ASL students perform on the stage. While our chorus is singing and so forth and it's, it's pretty, pretty awesome.
And they take up the whole stage, like if you've been to like a district music concert and you see the larger concerts, like if you see all of the choirs. Or district strings and how the stage is so full, the, when the ASL students are up there all in the front. Because all of the ensembles are playing behind them and they're all set up. So you really go from like stairs to stairs and then all of them. It's just an amazing sight to see how large that community has grown in our school.
And how proud they are.
Pretty awesome.
Yeah.
It really is. Well, I I hope that we um start thinking about trying to find another teacher.
Uh and the the last one is is our visual arts flowchart, um. And I'll, I'll like, unless you guys have questions on it, um I'll just keep that one up for a second. The challenge here again is is, you know, with the limited number of teachers, we're not always able to offer all of these courses. But they have the opportunity to sign up for them and then we we have to make difficult decisions on, alright, the numbers just aren't high enough for us to be able to offer. For example, like sometimes we can't offer the honors photo three, or we have to make that decision to try to combine honors photo three with. Uh well, not not photo three, but more the honors art four and so forth.
Or or the IB art.
Yep.
The IB art is at a class, not running history either.
Yeah, because the numbers just weren't weren't high enough and the number of sections that we can actually teach with with for art teachers. Um it's just not possible.
And and some of these courses, as well as some of the others you mentioned, they intersect with career pathways.
Yes.
As well.
Alright, and so one of the questions that that um you asked us to present on is really why are there less honors for the upperclassmen? Um and really, you know, our our, I think the number one answer is the reason there's less honors level for upperclassmen is because. We really believe that our AP, IB, ECE classes are are honors level classes for our eleventh and twelfth graders. Um ninth and tenth grade years are those years that they take the honors classes in order to prepare them so that they're on track. Um to take the AP, IB, ECE classes as juniors and seniors. Um the second point being, you know, college cu- uh study show and, you know, research based. The next two slides, I'm not really gonna go over, but it's it's got more of the detail and and the research behind it. Um but this bullet really, um it's proven that in ninth grade, not ninth grade, their freshman year of college. And uh their success in college correlates with them actually taking college courses as high school students. Um so it it proves success. Um also, when when colleges are are choosing their uh their, uh who they're gonna select in the admissions process. Uh one of the biggest factors that they're gonna factor in is did they take AP, IB or ECE courses? Um as high school kids. Uh they also, colleges would prefer uh AP, IB, ECE classes because they know what the standards are. Um the standards are set uh by either college board or by IB and so forth, so that they 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 know it ensures quality control. Uh it's not just the district coming up with, you know, it's not the district's curriculum, it's a national curriculum or a uh international curriculum that that's developed. That so that they know that that quality control is there. Um also, if we were to offer more honors level courses in each of the subject areas, it's it's going to serve as a roadblock for our students to choose. Some of our students would opt to take the easier path, when we would argue that we'd rather see them take the most rigorous path. And then in in and uh, you know, realize that they they can be successful, as we we talked about before, they are showing that they can be successful. And that's more of an impact. We really, really believe strongly that's more of an impact than if they were to just take an honors level course instead of challenging themselves. Um it would also offer additional tracks uh and additional courses, which which really would create more constraints to our schedule. Which also already has way too many constraints. We have way too many singleton courses. Um which can be a problem when you're building a schedule, because if you're only offering one class one time. Uh there's less opportunity to move schedules around so that we can fit everything that that a student would want. So so we wanna try to limit the number of constraints when we're trying to build that schedule, as these two, I think, would affirm as they're starting to build a schedule each year. And it's not a fun task. But um the next two slides, really, uh in a lot more detail describe what I was saying in in that bullet. It just gives uh some of the the research uh and so forth, but these just coincide with the slides that I reviewed.
Alright, so I I I would just, uh like an example I'd like to give you that that is a concern of mine.
Yeah.
Um is that um, you know, when we have, basically, it's like four or five core classes, right? That you have to take and then and then you'll have some electives and stuff. Um but if a key, if a student can't handle five AP or IB level classes as a junior. Um and and they end up having to kind of step, two steps down really to a to a standard. Or or um college prep level class, um rather than having, you know, all top tier classes in in one level down. And and um I I talked to a friend that um teaches at East Lima and and his child, um you know, has has one. You know, that's that is in that exact scenario, um you know, to kind of lighten the the pressure. Because obviously, um as you know, a lot of the kids that are, that excel are very high-stress kids too. Um so that that was my thought on on offering kind of that as an off-ramp. To that excessively stressful, like take five AP classes as a junior. Thing that it seems like a lot of kids are stuck in that, right? Not that they're stuck in it, but um maybe it's too much for some kids.
I, the one thing I I would just go back to, the, you know, in tenth grade, you have college prep, you have honors. To me, I know that it's a weighted wise, like when you're looking at our class rank and how we weight things, yes, it it's, we end up weighting the AP, the IB. Even more than an honors level course. Should we? Uh I guess, especially if we're offering honors level at junior and senior year. But I go back to that argument that AP and I, that that is our honors level courses as upperclassmen. Um and I, you know, I think that AP, let's just say AP uh calc, that AB course. As a junior, I think is just as demanding as uh pre calc, honors pre calc as a sophomore. You know, that to me is is, as a sophomore, you take pre calc and then you're in that direct trajectory to take the the AP class the following year. So to to me, that would almost be like we were putting, we would put a middle class in between our honors class in tenth grade and our college prep class in in tenth grade. I just feel like it would be another track is really what what we're getting at. And what we're really trying to do do is avoid having too many tracks.
Yeah.
And it, and so what you're mentioning is, um right now, we have three layers or three levels of weighting.
Yes.
Um and so uh one possibility would be to reduce it to two and.
Or reduce it to, who knows?
Yeah.
To, to try to avoid, uh I I don't even know if I wanna go in this app, but but rank in general. I, the stress that that we're causing kids from from weight and from like, they're choo, they're not choosing art classes. Because it's not weighted as an AP class.
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, that's very true.
I know my son took seven AP level classes and didn't ta, I forget what he didn't take, but um like a class that he really loved. Because so competitive that he had to have seven A pluses in in.
We have kids that don't take strings because.
Yeah, actually, yeah, that's the one he didn't. He'd been playing cello for ten years and then he didn't take it his senior year. Yeah, actually, yeah, that's the one he didn't. He'd been playing cello for ten years and then he didn't take it a senior year because.
Honestly, that's, I think. The conversations that I would love to have is is more in that. Is the whole idea of how we're weighting these and, yeah, i- if if we don't go to not weighting them, but maybe talk about, you know. Should we have honors, a college prep and a A P weight?
And I actually, um, thinking along those lines, it would, it's sort of. Remove a possible disincentive disincentive in terms of um, fully investing as a student in a given career pathway. Uh, and just having the, I I think it's wonderful that we have these identified career pathways. We're getting more. Because it might be a bridge to, you know, actual employment right out of high school, or it might be a bridge to. Interest I'm going to explore further um, in college and. Uh, so, yeah, that's wonderful to think about and actually, I guess it would come to our level maybe, but. Brought, brought to us from. So, so I just had a question. And so one thing I wanted to say, we've been talking about college prep and. A wonderfully involved uh, citizen of the town brought up the point that. That could be renamed, actually, um, something like college and career prep track. And I'd never really thought about it that way, but if that, and I know other high schools have like level one, level two, level three and. Who, three sometimes the highest, sometimes it's not. Um, so if we have that, that doesn't seem like it's a. Yeah, a board level decision, but it'd be, it'd be. Uh, it'd be, it seems like a great change to make eventually. Um, and then my other question along those lines of college and career and they're not, they intersect, but not always. Um, do we keep track of uh, roughly how many of our graduating seniors uh, are. Going off to immediately enroll in a a two-year or four-year degree program? Is it like, I feel like sixty percent half or something?
I would be lying if I just threw out a number right now.
That's part of the graduation requirement is to complete the Navi on a survey. So there are reports.
It's probably not like eighty percent, I would think. I don't know. Because, because that that that's worthwhile knowing because. Everything that was put up here for reasons for A P, I V and E C E. Well backed up with research, uh, thoughtfully, so and um, and unassailable, I'd say. Um, however, it is all about like preparation towards college and uh, we know in this very town. And if you get the right skills, you can walk into electric boat and have a a very fruitful, meaningful and. And um, um, successful career in every regard, uh, without a college degree and you'll get the training that's actually. And life skills that. I I think this is a, someone who works at college, but uh, that are, that are every bit as important. Um, and so, um, it's, so along those lines, like it's important that we kind of, it'd be great to see those numbers eventually. But that's what I was thinking about. The the student that. I guess specifically ask this, I'll just say, say you have a student who's in tenth grade honors English. How many of of those students um, go to college prep versus uh, up to. Um, A P, I B. Is it half? I I I don't have a sense of that. And and because in math, there's no issue there, right? They could continue on and honor or grow up to it, but. In English and I guess social studies and partially science, it seems, then there's got to be this. Some people are 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 no longer in honors, they're gonna go to college prep, some are gonna come up to um, A P.
Most of them, most of them grow up. I think we have um. In the junior year right now, we have two sections of I B English and I believe we have six sec- sections of A P Yukon English. So that's eight sections total. Of students that either went from honors. Or college prep and felt like they were ready, ready to move up and challenge themselves to the higher level. And I also think, um. You know, to another point in the conversation, I think that sometimes. A P and I B just in general. Those letters, those acronyms have these sort of like mystics. About them and some students that may feel that they're not ready, just when they know the acronym. May find, they're actually sitting in the class alongside their peers and a teacher that motivates them, find that. Actually, I'm I'm glad I went into A P and and I I was ready or I B. And I I was ready for this and I didn't think I was because those acronyms sound so scary. But oftentimes we're finding. That the the readiness is there and the beginning of the junior year, a lot of what we're doing. Is we're building their confidence to let them know that this class is for you. And this class can be for anybody that wants to just try. I think that prevails across the contents.
And then, um, with some of the A B, A P, I B courses are are combined now. Are there differentiated assignments when that's happening or is it just, it just, the curriculum just meshes?
It's not a perfect solution by any means, but uh. But no, they they're all taking the same course. They're they're all, you know, have the same expectations. I don't think in any of our classes right now. You know, we say, and correct me if I'm wrong, honestly. Um, I don't think there's any classes where we say, if you're planning on, you know, if you're taking I B next year, you need to do this extra. I think a lot of the stuff that they might do after they take the A P test. Will be in preparation if they're gonna take the I B class the following year, that type of thing, but.
Would it, um, so I teach some concurrent enrollment classes, uh, so it's it's just, for me, it's undergraduate and graduate students in together. And I've um, differentiated assignments, expectations and uh, testing as well. Is that something that could be thought about? So, so for instance. Uh, students going into uh. A P, actually, is it A P English in the eleventh grade or is it E C E? I can't remember, I think. Okay, so it's A P. Could, could there be a students in that same classroom, uh, but registered as honors? And then they're they're not taking the the Yukon or A P um, tests, like the, just the the expect expectation. They're tracking along the same route, but the expectation assignments is less. I don't know if there's, if that's not done at any other high schools, then it's probably not worth. Worth exploring. I'm just asking about it.
And I, I think we, I think it's difficult. I think it's it's difficult in the lens of of. Um, making sure you're, you're not teaching two different courses at the same time too. Uh, we would have to really be careful and look at it.
If, if it even happens in Connecticut, if not, it's, uh, don't, don't go down that path for for my sake. Um, yeah, so so it'd be great to get the numbers or on. Um, how many, what percentage of graduating seniors uh, go into college, two-year or four-year degrees straight away is recognizing that. These eight, these classes they take now, even though they don't go right away, uh, a lot of people do return as students. And then the other one would just that, that sense of from, just from the the four cores. I think there are four. For the tenth grade, uh, those in tenth grade honors, whatever. What what percent? Uh, goes uh, on to A B, I B, A P, I B or um, college prep? So just, just getting a sense of those roots.
I'll just throw this in there. I just did a count of the um. I B and Yukon English eleven and it's a hundred and thirty-two kids, so slightly over half of the students roughly. That are in the, that are that are in in that high level eleventh grade English.
And then what was it? What's what's the tenth grade for?
Oh, yeah, I didn't, I didn't get that far. There's like. Forty thousand entries.
English of honors English?
I don't need them now, just eventually.
Just a rough estimate. You don't have any honors class because they're usually twenty to twenty-five and.
I really appreciate the fact that it's eight oh three. And you guys are still here and still smiling, although I'm sure excited to go home, so.
And this is just a, like a survey or an overview really, right? We don't, we're not deciding on anything.
No, my my hope with this was, it's been discussed a lot. Um, in the board and that way people can watch this meeting and. And hopefully this will answer a lot of people's questions and, you know, in addition to just curriculum. So I think there's a lot of interest all over for this, this discussion, so I really do appreciate um, you having it. So, but do you have more questions on this?
No, you mentioned the time. I can't, I can't see the clock.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Alright. Alright, you wanna?
Second.
Alright, we're out.
Alright.
Thank you, thank you. I really appreciate you guys.